Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting, Tuesday, January the 28th, Leon County Commission, and we are starting. Commissioner Dozier, I believe you have...no, I don't have...Commissioner Lindley. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just take right over while we're getting it together. It's my pleasure to introduce today for the invocation Pastor Terry Delaney, who is the new pastor of missions and pastoral care at First Baptist Church. And if you'd like it to come up to the podium. And we are...we have a little shared history. We both...he's...his family's still living in, and I once lived in the huge metropolis of Mexico, Missouri. So he's been here in Tallahassee trying to get acclimated to our terrible weather for a couple of months. And with the invocation, please. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to begin by reading a passage. Jeremiah writes in chapter 29, verse 7, "Seek the welfare of the city where I have sent you into exile, and pray to the Lord on its behalf; for in its welfare you will find your welfare." Let us pray. Father, we confess that we are just exiles passing through. There have many that have come before us, and many, Lord, that will come after us. So, Lord, I pray that these men and women who are your image bearers, whom you have called to serve the people of Leon County, who are also your image bearers, Lord, that you would give them wisdom, that they would seek wisdom from you, the giver of wisdom, or that they would seek your will as they serve this county. We thank you, Father, for the opportunities to present petitions, Lord, but we want to do that with humility, with respect, and, Father, knowing that these men and women on the commission are making oftentimes difficult decisions with far more at stake than we can understand. So, Lord, we do pray for unity. We pray, Father, that under their leadership, this county would flourish, but it would flourish according to your word. We lift up all of these prayer requests, Lord, to Jesus Christ, who lived a sinless life and yet paid the penalty for our sins. He was buried, yet resurrected, and now sits at your right hand. We thank you for the hope we have in Jesus Christ. In his name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Commissioner Maddox, you up first? I'll let you recognize our guest in the audience, too.
All right. Mr. Chair, I have two proclamations to give. I'd like to deem today Rattler Day in the courthouse, huh? Two proclamation to give. The first I'm going to give is to Ryan Stanley, our outstanding quarterback of the FAMU Rattler team this year. I asked him to come up, along with Coach Simmons and our new athletic director. Is it Gosh? Yes, sir? Come on up. This man led, along with his head coach, led the Rattlers to a nine-and-two season, the best they've had in a while here, and I like to call them national champs because in my book they were. And they are...they far exceeded any of...any expectation any may have had up until this point for this...for the last year. Mr. Chair, the proclamation reads, "Whereas Florida A&amp;M University, home of the Rattlers, has a long history of greatness in football, which includes winning 15 black college football national championships. And whereas Florida A&amp;M University recruited Pembroke Pines Florida native Ryan Stanley in 2015 and immediately redshirted him. And whereas Ryan Stanley started seven games in 2016 when during the...when during the game against Delaware State, he rushed for three touchdowns and a season-high 118 yards on 12 carries highlighted by a 54-yard gallop." I remember those days. "Whereas during the 2017 season, Ryan earned third-team all Mid Eastern Atlantic Conference honors after a record-setting campaign, during which he completed a FAMU single-season best, 64.4% of his passes, 138 out of 284, for 2,190 yards and 16 touchdowns. And whereas in his senior season, Ryan led the Rattlers to a nine-and-two overall record, a national championship game win, and the program's first national ranking since 2009. And whereas Ryan Stanley leaves the Rattlers as the all-time career leader in touchdowns, 67, pass attempts, 1,187, completions, 636, and passing yards, 8,424. And is ranked first in the Mid Eastern Athletic Conference history in pass attempts, and second in total passing yards and pass completions. And whereas Ryan Stanley was named the 2019 Mid Eastern Atlantic Conference Offensive Player of the Year, now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, Leon County, Florida, that Ryan Stanley be recognized for his commitment and dedication to the sport of football and his excellence in athleticism. This is signed by the Chair, as well as the rest of the commission, and tested to by the county administrator." Congratulations.
First and foremost, I would like to thank God, thank my coaches, and thank you guys for having me here today. It's truly an honor. And like any award I get, that could seem like a personal accolade. I owe it to my teammates and my coaches, all the guys around me. All the records and completions and yards and touchdowns wouldn't have been done without my O-line, my receivers, running backs. And just being in the great city of Tallahassee for the last five years, I appreciate everything you guys do for the community, and Leon County will forever be my second home. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, Ryan is currently training for the NFL...for the NFL Draft. He's actually going to participate in Pro Day at Florida A&amp;M University, as well as his invitation to participate in Pro Day at the University in Miami. We wish you best. Very proud of everything that you did, that you're doing, that you're going to do. Don't forget about us. Come on back every now and then, see you. All right? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, through you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Maddox, I knew that FAMU had a...I thought they had a pretty good team this year, and of course, the yardstick that I always use is how they do against Howard University. And when they tiptoe past the bison, then I say, "They got to be good."
Tiptoe.
I knew they was good. So congratulations, Coach, and Ryan, and a wonderful year. Wonderful year.
Sir, yes, sir. Next up, we will have President Robinson come up to accept the proclamation. Not only is FAMU a school that is amazing in athletics, but they're also amazing in academics, one of the leading HBCUs in this nation. Commissioner Pratt, come on up with us.
Coach, athletic director, come on up. Ryan, you too, come on up. Make it a family thing. There you go.
All right. Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, the proclamation reads, "Whereas Florida A&amp;M University was founded in 1887 in Tallahassee, Florida, where it has evolved into a premier school among historically black colleges and universities, and remains the only historically black university in a 12-member state university system in Florida. And whereas Florida A&amp;M University has always maintained innovative educational strategies to ensure the success of its students. And whereas Florida A&amp;M University has recorded its highest GPA for incoming freshmen, which indicates it is attracting more high-achieving students. And whereas each year, US News and World Report release its best colleges list of top public schools. And whereas Florida A&amp;M University maintained its ranking as a number-two public HBCU and moved up two slots to number-seven to remain in the top 10 public and private HBCUs in the nation. And whereas Florida A&amp;M University remains the number-one-ranked HBCU in the state of Florida, now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners that Florida Agricultural and Mechanical University be honored and commended for its elite status as a top-public HBCU among national universities." This is signed by myself, the Chair, the rest of the commission, and tested to by the county administrator.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox and the members of the county commission. I accept this proclamation on the behalf of the 10,000 students at Florida A&amp;M University, now 600-plus faculty, several hundred staff, and of course, 80,000 alumni, who have contributed to our success over the past 132-plus years. We are proud to be a member of this community. We know how important athletics is to this community, but I've always talked about the fact that we should have everybody around the world recognize that we have three of the best academic institutions in this nation, right here in Tallahassee, Florida. And thank you for your support of our education and education in general, because what you do makes our job a whole lot easier at Florida A&amp;M University. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, come on top, sir. Take the picture on the dais.
Keep up the great work. You're doing great stuff. All right. Commissioner Minor, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This afternoon, it's a great honor for me to present this proclamation on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners. The League of Women Voters, as you know, has been a linchpin in American democracy. In fact, their tagline is "Empowering Voters, Defending Democracy." If you...during your campaigns, I'm sure you've met with members of League of Women Voters of Tallahassee, and that group is as well-knowledge...as knowledgeable and well-read on the public policy issues as any other organization in town. Statewide, they issue the Voter Guide, which is used by tens of thousands of voters across the state of Florida to make informed decisions on candidates. And they also organize debates. This organization is, at the national level, state, and local level, has done tremendous things for protecting our democracy and protecting the right of people to vote. So with that, this...later this week is the 100th anniversary of the League of Women Voters, and so we'd like to go ahead and present our proclamation for you all. Why don't you all come up? I'd like to introduce with us today Ms. Terry Cleland from League of Women Voters of Tallahassee, President, members of the Board of League of Women Voters of Tallahassee, Sandra Kendall and Christine Kogle. And then also, we have with us today the treasurer of the National League of Women Voters in DC, Ms. Jessica Lowminer, whom I've seen once or twice around, so...all right. Here's the proclamation. "Whereas on February 4th, 1920, the League of Women Voters, the League, was organized at the Victory Convention of the National American Women Suffrage Association in Chicago, Illinois. And whereas the League was formed six months prior to, but in anticipation of, ratification of the 19th Amendment, giving women the right to vote in the United States. And whereas the League was a political experiment designed to help 20 million women carry out their new responsibilities as voters by educating them about issues. And whereas, from the very beginning, the League determined that it would be nonpartisan, neither supporting nor opposing any political party or individual candidate. And whereas, the League continues today as a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in the government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. And today, the League is composed of members in over 800 local, county, and state leagues in all 50 states, plus the District of Columbia, the Virgin Islands, and Hong Kong. And whereas, among those state leagues is the League of Women Voters of Florida that was incorporated on October 29th, 1939, and in turn is composed of 29 local leagues with thousands of members. And whereas, among those local leagues in Florida is the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee that was incorporated on January 14th, 1957, and in turn is composed of more than 400 members. And whereas, members of the League first study and then take action on a broad range of issues after reaching consensus on positions. And whereas, leagues at all levels, among other activities, register voters, educate voters, and holding candidate forums and publishing voter guides, publish public policy research, and hold meetings on key issues..."and almost done. "Whereas, the League is a civic organization that has fought since 1920 to improve government and engage everyone in the decisions that impact their lives. And whereas, the League will celebrate its 100th anniversary on February 14th, 2020. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that today we recognize and honor the 100th anniversary of the League of Women Voters, dated this 11th day of February, 2020."
Thank you. Thank you so much for recognizing the role of the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee, the role that we play in the civic life of Tallahassee. All of you were once candidates, and we invited you to come to our candidate forums, and we invited you to give us input to our voter guides. We're gearing up for that again in this big 2020 election, so look for the email from us. The proclamation said it all, so I just want to invite anybody to become a member of the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee. Men are invited to be members since 1974. We are going to have a big celebration, a century in the making, in two weeks. On the 28th of February, it'll be at the top...of the political apex of Florida, the 22nd floor of the Capitol. It's going to be a lot of fun. Some of us are going to dress up as suffragists. We'll have historical figures from back in the day, and we are going to have the FAMU Choir is going to be joining us as well. So it's going to be a lot of fun and a meaningful time, and you can find information about that at our website, lwtallahassee.org. But I also want to make a special thank you to you, county commissioners, for your support of the Supervisor of Elections Office here in Leon County. Having confidence in your vote is extremely important, and your support of that office, your funding of it, makes a big difference in the confidence of the citizens of Leon County in their votes, so thank you for that. And we want to get a picture with you as well. If you don't mind getting up, we want to come up and have our picture.
Absolutely.
I want to take a picture with you. Y'all come on up. How you doing? We got plenty of room up here. Plenty of room.
So the $64 question is between Rick and Jessica, who's got the kids? I thought you had. Now, I guess we have our Board Association of Counties Executive Director Ginger Deligal, who will be presenting something without a commissioner down there.
Surprise.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have the honor of being able to spend a little bit of time today in public gratitude, not something that we at the association get to do a whole lot of. As you know, the Association of Counties was created by counties for counties to come together on issues of concern, to learn, share, and advocate in ways that help counties serve their communities better. The association has regularly leaned on Leon, our capital county, for help. They're even past presidents among your ranks, Mr. Chairman, having served as our president in the association from 2012 to 2014, and Commissioner Maddox, currently serving as president of the statewide association. A little over a year ago, I reached out to your county administrator, Vince Long, to see if he would be willing to help educate FACT staff on all things county government. He said yes, and quickly put Andy Johnson and Nikki Payden on the task. Along with over 40 Leon County staff members, they went to work planning for county government educational experiences for the entire FACT staff. We went to the EOC, spent time at the detention center, heard from animal control, ate lunch in Cascades Park, visited the Joint Dispatch Center, planning and zoning, heard from housing, heard about economic development, the library, procurement, Public Works, EMS, constitutional officers, solid waste, and parks and recreation, just to name a few off the top of my head last night. We walked away from each of the four days, more knowledgeable, yes, but more importantly, very proud to be headquartered here in Leon County. And personally, those four days made me immensely grateful that I can live, work, and play in this community. Much of the FACT staff, stand up and wave, please, is here with me today...they're not standing, as an outward expression of thanks to you and your staff for helping us better do the jobs that you have given us to do. Onto the formal recognition part. The FACT staff has talked for months about what we could do or what we could give that would be meaningful to the county as our expression of thanks. We know about all the lucite pieces in the lighted case, lots of awards that have been given and received by this county. But one of the things that we've noticed lately is counties helping counties all around this great state. And with the FACT staff charged with doing that as well, we decided that Leon County had certainly been a county helping all counties by investing time and energy in us. So we are pleased to announce today a new FACT recognition program, Counties Helping Counties. Leon County is the first to receive this recognition. Later this afternoon, actually around 4-ish, the FACT staff is sending out an announcement to all of Florida's counties about Leon County's recognition and this new program. And with your indulgence, Mr. Chair, I'd like to share with you what that announcement will say. Florida's counties are 67 strong. Counties regularly work as one entity and speak with one voice to build a prosperous Florida with flourishing communities for our 21 million citizens. There are times, however, when individual counties work across the county line to assist another county in need. For example, several counties, including Lee, Monroe, and Walton Counties, sent staff to the devastated Panhandle following Hurricane Michael to assist with recovery efforts. FACT would like to start recognizing counties for going above and beyond, not just in service to their citizens, but in service to their fellow citizens. We are pleased to announce that Leon County is the first recipient of the Counties Helping Counties recognition. In 2019, Leon County, Florida, conducted a comprehensive and immersive program for FACT staff on the nuances and business of running a county government. The program included four day-long programs explaining in depth the different facets of county government and the critical nature of the county services provided. While FACT serves counties, many of our staff have never worked with local governments directly, and very few are knowledgeable on the intricacies of county government. The program meticulously designed by Leon County presented FACT staff with the hands-on exposure to the different roles and requirements of county government they otherwise would not have received. By helping FACT staff become better leaders, Leon County has had a direct role in how the organization serves its members and its overall success. With the help of Leon County, FACT staff has gained a deeper appreciation and understanding of the work you do every day, and therefore will be more informed and inspired when assisting counties across the state. FACT has designated wall space in the upstairs of FACT's headquarters that will now contain a gallery of professionally-produced framed photographs honoring each County Helping Counties. Leon County will be the first. Thank you so much for all that you did for us. We appreciate it very much.
You want to come up here? You going to bring them up here for the picture? Mr. Chair, what Ginger did not mention was that there is a generous...generous discount due to the FACT. I'm just kidding. No. On behalf of Florida Association of Counties, I want, as President, to thank our board and our staff for being...for opening the doors to FACT staff, to show them a little bit about what we do. We take a lot of pride in the fact that we lead the state, not only the state, but the nation, in the way we handle our business. He said yes, and quickly put Andy Johnson and Nikki Payden on the task. Along with over 40 Leon County staff members, they went to work planning for county government educational experiences for the entire FACT staff. We went to the EOC, spent time at the detention center, heard from animal control, ate lunch in Cascades Park, visited the Joint Dispatch Center, planning and zoning, heard from housing, heard about economic development, the library, procurement, Public Works, EMS, constitutional officers, solid waste, and parks and recreation, just to name a few off the top of my head last night. We walked away from each of the four days, more knowledgeable, yes, but more importantly, very proud to be headquartered here in Leon County. And personally, those four days made me immensely grateful that I can live, work, and play in this community. Much of the FACT staff, stand up and wave, please, is here with me today, they're not standing, as an outward expression of thanks to you and your staff for helping us better do the jobs that you have given us to do. Onto the formal recognition part. The FACT staff has talked for months about what we could do or what we could give that would be meaningful to the county as our expression of thanks. We know about all the lucite pieces in the lighted case, lots of awards that have been given and received by this county. But one of the things that we've noticed lately is counties helping counties all around this great state. And with the FACT staff charged with doing that as well, we decided that Leon County had certainly been a county helping all counties by investing time and energy in us. So, we are pleased to announce today a new FACT recognition program, Counties Helping Counties. Leon County is the first to receive this recognition. Later this afternoon, actually around four-ish, the FACT staff is sending out an announcement to all of Florida's counties about Leon County's recognition and this new program. And with your indulgence, Mr. Chair, I'd like to share with you what that announcement will say. Florida's counties are 67 strong. Counties regularly work as one entity and speak with one voice to build a prosperous Florida with flourishing communities for our 21 million citizens. There are times, however, when individual counties work across the county line to assist another county in need. For example, several counties, including Lee, Monroe, and Walton Counties, sent staff to the devastated Panhandle following Hurricane Michael to assist with recovery efforts. FACT would like to start recognizing counties for going above and beyond, not just in service to their citizens, but in service to their fellow citizens. We are pleased to announce that Leon County is the first recipient of the Counties Helping Counties recognition. In 2019, Leon County, Florida, conducted a comprehensive and immersive program for FACT staff on the nuances and business of running a county government. The program included four day-long programs explaining in depth the different facets of county government and the critical nature of the county services provided. While FACT serves counties, many of our staff have never worked with local governments directly, and very few are knowledgeable on the intricacies of county government. The program meticulously designed by Leon County presented FACT staff with the hands-on exposure to the different roles and requirements of county government they otherwise would not have received. By helping FACT staff become better leaders, Leon County has had a direct role in how the organization serves its members and its overall success. With the help of Leon County, FACT staff has gained a deeper appreciation and understanding of the work you do every day, and therefore will be more informed and inspired when assisting counties across the state. FACT has designated wall space in the upstairs of FACT's headquarters that will now contain a gallery of professionally-produced framed photographs honoring each county helping counties. Leon County will be the first. Thank you so much for all that you did for us. We appreciate it very much.
You want to come up here? You going to bring them up here for the picture?
Mr. Chair, what Ginger did not mention was that there is a generous, generous discount due to the FACT. I'm just kidding. No. On behalf of Florida Association of Counties, I want, as President, to thank our board and our staff for opening the doors to FACT staff, to show them a little bit about what we do. We take a lot of pride in the fact that we lead the state, not only the state, but the nation, in the way we handle our business. And not only the way we handle our business, but the way we teach our staff how to handle business. And so, to think that FACT trusted us enough to send their staff, who, as Ginger said, most don't have much experience in local government, to learn about what local government does by the best in the nation here in Leon County means a lot. And so, Vince, we set the policy, but you execute it. You train the staff. You are the one that makes sure that our reputation stays what it is when it comes to the work product that we produce. And don't let that go to your head. Only a piece of it is you. But I want to let you know, on behalf of FACT, just how much we appreciate you, and on behalf of the Commission, how much we appreciate you for leading the nation and building that reputation of excellence when it comes to work product at the county level. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will echo what Commissioner Max has said. Ginger, thank you, and thank you all for all your staff. I didn't realize everyone was here today. To build on that, the leadership within the FACT board and on committees and others, has really been beneficial, I think, for the commissioners, for our staff, to learn more from other counties. So, thank you for that. And, Mr. Chair, just because we focus so much on FACT, and as part of FACT, we don't mention our rebranded Institute for County Government. So, I just had to take a moment, serving on that board. Eric Poole's here. Ginger, your leadership, and Eric, and all the staff that works on that, the programs that are being developed to educate county commissioners and educate our staff and others are exceptional. And I'm going to just, I hate to do it to him, but Phil walked out of one, our Public Works Director, walked out of one of the trainings last year and said that, really, he thought it was exceptional. And to hear that from one of our staff members, hearing, you know, or seeing that the information you're providing to us as commissioners resonates with our staff was really a great indication that we're on the right track. So, thank you very much. Proud to serve with all of you, and appreciate what you all do for all of, everyone in the state of Florida. Thanks.
Thanks. Vince, you make us proud, and Nikki and Andy, who probably did the yeoman's work here, thanks for all that you've done. It's a real benefit to work in a county like this where the staff can carry the load like that and really make us proud. Let me just say that some of this is returning the favor. I know that when I first got elected, I way underestimated the complexity of this job. And one of the benefits of being in Tallahassee was that I stumbled down the street to FACT and said, "How does this work? Because I don't get it." And so, they have been a huge, huge resource for me over the years and really helpful. So, anyway, thank you, Ginger, for the awards. Very nice. Vince?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just very quickly, and this is along the same lines of the sentiment that you just expressed, but just for FACT staff, this is the least that we could do to help you all who help us so much. And just because I've said it to them at a couple of their program days, you know, this work that we did with them, I just want to thank Ginger for allowing her staff to take this amount of time to really learn the ins and outs of local government and county government. And so, for that, I just thank Ginger and her team for taking the time to really do that. They were certainly walking the walk with us, and we greatly appreciated it. So, thanks a lot.
All right. That's it for presentations. Consent? Do we have anything pulled?
Mr. Chairman, we do. We have one item pulled from consent number six by Commissioner Minor.
Mr. Chairman, can we pull item nine as well?
We can, but let me just make a broad statement here. I'd love to be able to get back to the days of 24 hours, you know, in advance to pull things. It's hard for some of us that, you know, you want to go through, if you know it's going to be pulled, it changes how much time you're going to spend really digging through and trying to figure out what the issue might be. But I'm fine with that tonight, Commissioner, but I'd just like to say, and I asked Vince the other day, there's some kind of loose policies that, not loose, but policies, we have about, you know, 24 hours in advance of meeting as far as pulling something off of it. So, but with that, we've got a motion for the remaining of consent except for six and nine, Commissioner Proctor, was it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for everything remaining. Any discussion on those? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposition? Okay, so, let's go to six first.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, item six seeks your approval of a plat of the retreat at May Hand subdivision, and with that, I will defer to Commissioner Minor.
Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I pulled this agenda item because my spouse is a realtor, and she has a client that could likely be very interested in one of the properties on that plat. So, for that reason, I'm going to abstain from voting.
Okay.
Move the item, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that item? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposition? Okay, motion carries. You know.
Six zero one.
Pardon?
Six zero one.
Okay, thank you. Number nine, Commissioner Proctor.
Chairman, I wanted to pull this item as it pertains to disaster recovery, our consultant services. And as I looked at the selection process, the meeting remains public until the vendor is actually in the negotiation. And I was just pondering why everything is public except the talking about the money part, and that concerns me. But even more so, the criteria and evaluation of these proposals and the point spread for how we get to selection, we have categories for corporate backgrounds, business experience, resources, and key project personnel, project approach, and cost fee. And that's it. I keep believing that in the area of picking up debris and managing debris cleanup and sticks and limbs and stuff, that there ought to be minority participation. And I know that we continually commit to there being minority participation or points given yet again and again. This is going to be 75% reimbursed by FEMA. So, I realize that we're dealing with another government, and that's the federal, and perhaps perchance they just don't have regard for WMBE. We've seen that in transportation and so forth. So, if that really is the sticking point, that it's the federal reimbursement which has no requirement for diversity, then I believe that we ought to have in the scoring points which give companies our recognition and respect for the public's dollars. So, I wanted to ask Vince, is that, am I suspecting correctly that that's why we give no points for WMBE for this consultant?
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Mr. Chairman, you're right, Commissioner Proctor. It really all comes down to ultimately how the vendors would be paid, given that they would be paid on a reimbursement basis solely with federal funds. Federal funds, or the federal laws prohibit any aspirational targets for MBE or the expenditure of federal funds to be tied to aspirational targets.
Okay, I want to be clear. I was a little frustrated that here again, some more money, and we seem able to get totally on track to really get serious about MBE participation. Chairman, move the item.
The motion. Have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposition? Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Okay, citizens to be heard on non-agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have several speaker cards on citizens to be heard on non-agended items. The first speaker is Dan McDaniel.
Name an address for the record, if you don't mind.
For the record, yes, Dan McDaniel, 7243 Winter Peak Lane. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good afternoon to all of you. I came here because I had concerns in hearing of the Children's Services Council coming back up to the public this year, and was reminded that the last time this was brought before the public, Carol Griffin and I had enacted this tax committee, and we opposed it. And there were reasons that we opposed it at the time, and I'm asking a lot of the same questions right now, and wanted to present some of those. Now, that was 30 years ago, and so, I wanted to give a little bit of a historical perspective. I know many of you were around town. You weren't commissioners. Mr. Teal, of course, was here, but that hasn't changed. And, but the perspective of that time could have been one of two things. I mean, we, as a committee at the time in the political arena, could have taken one of two tax. I think, and I hope, what we did was bring about some of the questions about creating a new governmental entity, and it was on the ballot, I should say, with two different governmental entities. But bringing about another governmental entity and what that might create, because we didn't believe the scope was well-defined. And I'd like to think that the public got that message, and that's why it was rejected at the time. I know that the argument could be made just as well, for those that lived here in the 1980s. Commissioner Flynnly, I know you were quite vocal in some of these as well, but during that time, we had a number of annexation amendments by the city. There was a school bond referendum about a year or so before this. I was sitting here trying to remember everything, but there was a sales tax vote as well that had passed, and then maybe you could argue that, well, there was this great backlash to these kinds of things. So, it could be argued one way or the other. What I'm concerned about, though, is the type of scope that this might have. What are we getting ourselves involved with? With the background that I have in this type of area of children or providing services and being a systems person most of my career, I can tell you that even if you piggyback on somebody else's services for eligibility and for other things, there are always going to be questions, and there's always going to be a murky area that you get yourself involved with when it comes to government services and that sort of eligibility, when in fact, I don't know that we have properly gone through the other services that are available. I don't know what new is being done. Last comment I just wanted to make, and I know that your county administrator's always done a good job in this area, as has his predecessor, but after those events back in the 80s and 90s, I'd always sent a letter to Parwaz Alam when he was the administrator, and he always said that the county will not personally get involved or use resources. And it's just something I want to put everybody on notice about, and hopefully that isn't repeated again. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker, Terry Madigan.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Terry Madigan, 1052 Summerbrook Drive, Tallahassee. I'm here also to comment on the Children's Services Council and to ask you to reconsider your vote and withdraw it from the November ballot. I have read the report. It's not that long. The appendices are about three times longer. It's got a lot of artful words, and I know some people spent a lot of time on it, and everybody is, of course, for the children and doing good things for the children. But the way I see this, you're creating an entity that is not, has yet to define, or has not defined exactly what it's going to do. It hasn't set benchmarks, no specifics on, you know, how they're going to establish benchmarks, measure success, or measure what it is they're going to put out in the community. But they have taxing authority to start with, and I believe that right off the bat, and we don't even know who would be on it, it's like an $8 million to start with. It's an extra tax. I think the county, well, I know the county commission has the authority to do everything that this particular council could do. This is pushing off, you know, I realize you don't want to raise taxes, nor do I want you to raise taxes, but in fact, this is a tax raise, and you're putting it off to another committee of unelected persons to do that, where you already have the authority to do everything that council could do. You're going to be creating a new bureaucracy. You're going to be creating a lot of expenses to go with that, and it is just wholly undefined at this time. We do, every county has issues with, you know, children. We all want the children to do better. From my reading of the reports and the website is, I believe, there's nine of these councils already, and Leon County already ranks ahead of seven of them to start with, as far as, you know, the problems that we have with children on some of the metrics that are available. So, I don't know that there, I just don't see there's a reason to create a tax when we don't have a clear objective as to what we're going to do with the money. It's a tax increase without adequate representation or without adequate explanation, and I would urge the Commission to reconsider and draw it back, take it off the ballot, and do whatever needs to be done in this regard, the Commission can do it. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry.
The next speaker is Emily Fritz.
Emily, welcome. Name an address for the record.
My name is Emily Fritz, and my address is 1433 Vucaree Drive, Tallahassee 32308. I want to flashback to the year 2006. That was the year that a new tax was on the ballot. It was a sales tax for Indigent Healthcare. The reason at which failed, and in this very room, the commissioners who voted to put it on the ballot were encouraged, by some people, not everybody, not to put it on the ballot because the plan was terrible. The county had paid for a consultant to write a plan. They had a lot of gaps. It was very, a plan that really didn't tell people how the money was going to be spent. And it failed, but the commissioners were warned. In 2018, you voted not to put the Children's Services Council on the referendum on the ballot that year because you wanted a plan. You felt that there was not adequate time to develop a plan and educate the voters. So, you pushed it to 2020. You appointed a committee and dedicated taxpayer dollars to support the committee. They met for 16 months, and you do have a document, but you still don't have a plan. The plan doesn't tell you how the money will be spent. It doesn't identify how many children will be served. It doesn't include benchmarks. It has no outcome measurement plan, and it does not include an inventory of existing services and programs. This is not what you asked for. I watched the county commission meeting the night you did that vote, and you didn't say, "Give us a plan devoid of these items that I just listed." This tax, it will be a blank check. We don't know who's going to levy the tax. We don't know how the money will be spent. For that reason, it's inappropriate for this to go to the ballot, and I ask you to remove this from the ballot. Thank you.
Thanks, Emily.
Final speaker on this item, Sue Osheski.
Sue, name an address for the record, if you don't mind.
Sue Osheski, 3002 Barclay Court. I'm not going to bore you with any details. I think the previous three speakers were very eloquently versed. I just will say that I'm a retired budget director, and the legislature never gave us money without specific instructions on how to spend it, and I believe you don't have instructions on how this is going to be spent. Thank you. I'd like for you to remove it from the ballot.
Okay, Mr. Administrator, that's it for speakers.
Yes, sir.
All right, general business. First item up, 15.
Thank you, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, this item seeks consideration of a negotiated renewal of the current solid waste collection agreement with Waste Pro, which maintains the current residential subscription rates. Again, no increase for residential subscription rates, and provides for an early termination for unsatisfactory performance. Of course, all of this reflects the board's recent direction at your last meeting. Staff is recommending options one and two, one being to, in the best interest of the county, to reject all bids, and two, to continue the service with Waste Pro by effectuating items Sub A and Sub B. Happy to answer any questions that you might have on any of this, Commissioners, but you do have several speaker cards on this item.
I'd say let's listen to the speakers first, then we'll have, okay.
Great. First speaker is Carrie Litherland.
Good evening, Carrie. Name an address for the record.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Carrie Litherland, 1336 Jackson Street, Tallahassee 4032303. Today, I'm here as just a resident of Leon County. I know a few of you know me from other organizations, but today, my opinions are solely my own and don't represent that of any of the organizations I'm with. For a while now, I've tried my best to be a good steward of our community and focused on sustainable practices individually and collectively within our community. About a year ago, I started researching the idea of a curbside composting service that would include not only yard debris or newspapers, but food waste as well. would include not only yard debris or newspapers, but food waste as well. I recently just caught up on some of the discussions you had, so I know I'm kind of late in the game. But I did notice that FCC has a history of not only sustainable practices, but do have the infrastructure for something like this, having curbside composting, our compost community pick up, which would be really awesome in this community to engage in and move us in the right direction. I acknowledge, like I said, I acknowledge that it's late in the game to change this or put it into the contract. I just hope that in looking at who to contract with, that this, the future of where we're going is in consideration. And that I, I hope that, you know, you've noticed that in the staff, what I noticed, which was in the staff comments, that Waste Pro hasn't, in my opinion, been the best stewards of our community or of our environment. It's acknowledged in the comments that they have a history of hydraulic fluid leaks and that only when pushed by you guys are committed to making those changes, those necessary changes to protect our environment and our community. And I hope that, just as you guys have been leaders in our community for sustainable practices, that we choose vendors who do the same thing. And regardless of this decision, I do hope that we can continue the conversation on what it would look like for this community to have a curbside composting service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Charles Merkley.
Charles, name an address for the record, if you don't mind. Good afternoon. Charles Merkley, 6760 Moscoogy Street, Orlando, Florida. I'd like to just talk a minute about some data that's real and within the county. This contract started roughly in 2014, and what you have in front of you is the complaints and liquidated damages. So when this started, transitions, as I heard on the previous meetings, are very difficult. We're aware of that. As we see, as the facts say, the complaints and dollars follow. But what didn't happen, and what happened sometime in June, we had a meeting and we talked about, you guys talked about, better service. But as you can see, the service hasn't gotten better. The dollars followed the complaints. And that's very concerning for the residents and also looking at what service you're about to do or possibly do today. So with that information, I want to show you facts and on slides. On the left, you will see, that's the city of Tallahassee, 19, almost $20. Waste Management, when they were doing the work here, Leon County, almost $20. Waste Pro's first shot at the number, 19 and change. Waste Pro's second shot, 18, almost 19. Then you see FCC, our only price that we provided, is still lower than your current previous rates. So with the facts, and I ask you, please, to check these facts, is that we look at this data, and you had once, twice opportunity to bid this service out. Waste Pro had, or excuse me, yeah, Waste Pro had their current level of service at 1450. FCC has brought to you, with new equipment and new commercial equipment at each resident, or at each commercial business, a very, very sustainable price. And what I'm trying to tell you today is facts, and I think you should evaluate the facts and understand the service level that you currently have or the service level our track record is presenting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker, Dan Brazel.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, county commissioners. My name is Dan Brazel, 9172 Lay Road, Houston, Texas. I'm the Director of Operations for FCC with the responsibility of the whole U.S. in terms of collection operations. Our proposed resource plan provides 35% more local jobs to the community to not only provide better service, but a stimulation of the economy as well. Our service levels continue to exceed the resident governing body expectations in our current markets, and we continue to demonstrate we are a people-focused, performance-driven company. We reviewed a comparison of service in Orange County several weeks ago with you all between FCC and Waste Pro. FCC services almost twice as many households as Waste Pro, and despite servicing twice as many, FCC had six times less complaints on that contract. Another example can be seen in our Palm Beach County contract, where we are currently the largest hauler servicing more than 107,000 residential households. We are one of four companies on that contract, and we are the only firm since the commencement of that contract to have zero liquidated damages, so we are very proud of. In comparison, Waste Pro services 46,000 households, which is less than half of our service area and has received more than $4,000 in liquidated damages since the commencement of the contract. These are true apples-to-apples comparisons of the two firms working in the same locations under the same conditions. We have seen over the prior months a hesitancy to renew with Waste Pro due to not servicing residential expectations. With this new renewal of the existing contract comes zero new guarantees or financial penalties to Waste Pro when their service continues as it has over the last several years. The residential rates will remain the same. However, the proposal puts a financial burden on your commercial customers with a 37% price increase, or on average, $1,000 annually per Leon County business owner. This increase comes with zero changes to the current service or containers on their property, and total increase would be more than $1.56 million. If the current contract is extended, the service issues will continue, and a higher commercial price will be paid. Even if you choose to terminate the contract after renewal, it will take you a minimum of eight to 12 months for a full bid process. I ask, are you prepared to have another year of thousands of complaints until another hauler can come in to provide service? For just 93 cents per week, your residential customers will receive an empty can, clean streets, and overall customer satisfaction. We urge you to follow through your bid process and issue an NOI to FCC today. Thank you.
The next speaker, Brandy Davis.
Good afternoon. My name is Brandy Davis, 9178 Lay Road, Houston, Texas. I'm the Director of Human Resources for FCC Environmental Services since 2015. My responsibility is to oversee all aspects of HR within the United States. Some of you mentioned and previously asked questions regarding some important aspects of HR-related policies, and I'm here to provide you with our position. We are firmly committed to equal employment opportunities and compliant with all laws that prohibit employment discrimination on the basis of race, age, and other protected classifications. This policy applies to all privileges of employment, including hiring, promotions, disciplinary actions, et cetera. These hiring practices are not only seen at site level, but within our corporate headquarters in Houston, in which 34% of our staff are African-American, 44% are Latino, and 22% are Caucasian. Of this percentage, 50% of our workforce within our corporate headquarters is female. This is personally one of the reasons why I remain on FCC's leadership team. In addition to this, we partner with multiple MWBE companies wherever we perform our services. Our percentage of MWBE subcontractors is one of the highest in the industry, ranking anywhere from 20 to 60%. We partner with vendors that provide services to include temp labor companies, fuel, supply, lubricants, tires, spare parts, landscaping, uniforms, towing services, just to name a few. Our goal is to hire locally, as our corporate initiative is always to return as much of our budgeted money back into the communities in which we serve. We also wholeheartedly believe in developing our local staff to grow their careers with us. We have several individuals who have grown from drivers to supervisors and even to operation site managers. I also want to mention that our company has a profound belief and commitment in providing opportunities to those that were formerly incarcerated. Recidivism rates decrease when people are simply given the opportunity to provide for themselves and for their families. More than two-thirds of our employees within our recycling facilities are second chance employees. Our MWBE participation within those facilities are also higher than 40%. We will implement all these policies in Leon County to provide the best customer service by partnering with the largest amount of local subcontractors and MWBEs throughout our collaboration with the Capitol City Chamber. As a reminder, the bid required no MWBE participation. Despite this, we will meet a 20% MBE participation rate with this contract. We ask that you issue a NOI to FCC today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker, Gigi Rolini.
My name is Gigi Rolini. My address is 106 East College Avenue, Tallahassee, Florida 32301. I am an attorney at Sterns Weaver Miller, and I lead the firm's Government and Administrative Practice Group. We represent FCC Environmental Services. I spend many of my days representing both vendors and local governments during the procurement process, advising from everything from releasing bids to awarding contracts to pursuing and defending an award and bid protest. The agenda item includes an amendment to the current franchise agreement with Waste Pro. This proposed amendment does two things. It adds a termination section, and it also adds a section immediately increasing the commercial rates by almost 37%. I'm typically hesitant about changing a material term in a contract that was previously bid. Here, the contract was bid in 2013, and amendments are governed by the county's purchasing policy and the contract itself. Under the terms of the current contract, the board may renew the agreement for an additional three-year term, quote, "at the same prices, terms, and conditions." Under the county's purchasing policy, adjustments in pricing may be made during the term of the contract only under specific and certain conditions. Applicable in this situation, the prices may be adjusted by agreement on a fixed price adjustment. The current contract provides for a price adjustment by a formula. And specifically here, the current franchise agreement restricts annual increases of commercial rates to 5%, which is far lower than the proposed 37% in the agenda item. The agenda item proposing the rate increase indicates, quote, "In negotiations, Waste Pro requested consideration to adjust the rates for commercial waste service." There's no indication that the rate increase was in accordance with the terms of the agreement. The purpose of the bid process is to provide fairness and transparency. Unexpectedly increasing rates outside of the bid process, outside of the contract, and outside of the policy may appear as though it's unfair and not entirely transparent. Here, the most defensible, fair, and transparent position for the county would be to decline the proposed amendment to the current franchise agreement. And in my humble opinion, the most transparent and fair option would be to continue to carry out the ITB process that the commission set in motion last year. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
The next speaker, Jessica Iserman.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Jessica Iserman, 401 East Jackson Street, Tampa. Just a reminder, I am an attorney representing FCC. Today, I wanted to just briefly discuss, what does an extension of the current franchise agreement mean for the county? To me, what it means is three more years of bad service with a higher commercial rate that has no added benefits. And so, turning to the amendment, which is part of your agenda item, what does this proposed amendment to the current franchise agreement mean for the county? It means that you cannot easily terminate this contract. I was here at the last meeting, I heard the discussion, I heard Commissioner Minor and Commissioner Maddox talk about wanting benchmarks for termination. That's not provided for you. There are no benchmarks. And also, what will happen when you issue another bid? It takes a lot of time, as you see. You started this process a year before the contract was set to expire. And what happens if you release a bid and they get their act back together? Are we going to, you know, go through this cycle again? I also want to point out that you asked Waste Pro to cover costs should the bid have to be terminated, and that is not included in the amendment because it's not proper under the legal standards of amending the contract, which your county attorney has opined to. But that is another example of a direction you tried to get in an amendment, you tried to get, but you will not be able to get out of this contract amendment. And instead, what you actually got is a 37% commercial rate increase. That was clearly not direction provided by the board. There is no explanation for why this is an increase. There is no adjustment justification. There's no fuel cost. There's, I, you know, I recommend you ask for more information on where this came from and why you're stuck to impose a 37% commercial increase. Now, I want to look at what the current contract provides and what the new contract provides. Staff worked diligently to learn from past mistakes to create an airtight contract. They added a termination clause to, that would allow you to terminate in the result of excessive complaints, which is this amendment that you're going for now. That's already in the bid contract. So if you award this to FCC, you're getting that termination clause. Further, FCC is willing to amend the bid contract to provide for a termination for convenience clause, if that's something that you would desire. The current contract also provides for some liquidated damages. I have some fun props. This is the current contract liquidated damage. This is the proposed contract under the bid. It is much more extensive, and it's very clear, staff has learned from past mistakes and included all of that into this process. So to wrap up, you are not obligated to reject all bids. I urge you to request more information, but ultimately, I urge you to issue an NOI to FCC. Thank you.
Next speaker, Maxwell Hurley.
Max Hurley, 117 South Gadsden Street. I'm here tonight on behalf of FCC. FCC won a bid. FCC was 70 cents less expensive than Waste Pro's bid. So what are we voting on tonight? Last month, the board wanted to go back to Waste Pro to negotiate a contract extension, specifically adding language that would hold Waste Pro accountable. The board asked for the potential of a self-activating termination clause with a complaint threshold, and Waste Pro said no to that. The board asked for a termination fee if Waste Pro was terminated for convenience. Waste Pro said no to that. Then, with no board direction, Waste Pro is bringing back here to you tonight a 37% commercial rate hike. Waste Pro has had their chance. They had seven years of chances. They had their chance on two separate bids, and they lost both of them. And they have had their chance to come to the table tonight and make a good-faith effort to bring back a straightforward contract extension, and what did they do? They are demanding a 37% commercial rate hike for absolutely nothing in return. You know, my dad likes to say that I trust everyone until they prove me wrong. I think it's safe to say that we should not trust Waste Pro any longer. Waste Pro has come to this body in June of 2014, eight full months after their contract began, and they promised then that complaints were going to improve. They have not. They have made promises over and over again, year after year, to do better, and they have not. They are worse now than they have ever been in terms of liquidated damages. FCC has offered the lowest bid on these customer service levels, lower than city rate payers pay, lower than both of Waste Pro's bids, and lower than residents paid prior to 2013. If we approve this contract extension, we are going to be right back in this situation months from now, when Waste Pro's honeymoon has wore off on this extension, and we're back to business as usual as Waste Pro, which is thousands of complaints a year and Waste Pro singing a new song and dance about how things are going to change. I am here tonight, commissioners, to make a different offer. We are seeking you to move Option 3, which would issue the award, to NOI on three terms. One, that we would meet a 20% MBE goal in partnership with the Capitol City Chamber. Two, that we add in the same termination of convenience clause in our contract. And three, that we would extend Waste Pro's contract until December of 2020, which would put the transition not in the fall, but instead in December, which is allowed under the contract for one-month-at-a-time extensions in the event of a transition. And if the county would like a chance to review this offer more and have our legal teams bring back a formal agenda item, we ask that you issue the NOI tonight and instruct staff to work with FCC and bring back an offer in the next meeting to look at Waste Pro's negotiated offer, FCC's negotiated offer at the same time. And we know this process has taken a while, but some things are worth taking our time on. Thank you.
Next speaker, Lloyd Children. Next speaker, Lloyd Childery.
Name and address for the record, Lloyd, if you don't mind. Lloyd Childery, 8487 Congressional Drive, here in Leon County. Mr. Chair, County Commission, thank you again for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. Attending with us tonight, I have Mr. Bob Hires. Mr. Bob Hires, he's one of our founders and a current director on our board. Also have Mr. Effort Majors. Mr. Majors, our operations manager here in Tallahassee. I have Amy Tingley, she's our corporate attorney. Ms. Milam Chun, our controller. Last month, several of you expressed concerns. Waste Pro heard you. We heard you loud and clear. To address the concerns, we had already put solutions in place, and you've seen the results. But just to reiterate what we have in place, all of our frontline trucks have been inspected, and any leaks identified have been addressed or will be addressed. We have a plan in place. We have continued requisitions for additional staff in hydraulic maintenance. We have committed additional staff and equipment assigned directly to Leon County and their contract. We will be conducting site visits of every commercial account between now and October 1st, replacing any dumpsters needing repair with new or like-new dumpsters. FCC said that all you're getting is an increase in commercial, but what FCC didn't say is that their commercial rate was actually higher than ours. So should you move forward with FCC, you will not just have this, you will have an extended one as well. It was brought up about our contributions to the community. Waste Pro typically does not publicize contributions in the community. However, we feel it's important to let you know what we do, either in cash or in-kind contributions. We contribute to Keep Tallahassee and Leon County Beautiful. We contribute to the chain of parks, the art festival, Florida High Baseball and Volleyball, Boys and Girls Club in Boystown. We also support the Kearney Center. In addition, our 2020 targeted partnerships are Community Watch or Crime Watch with the City of Tallahassee and Leon County, Second Harvest of the Big Bend, of which we've already started, and Bond Elementary, to name a few. There is seldom a time that Waste Pro turns down a request for assistance. Waste Pro wants to continue to be your waste service provider. We ask that you grant this three-year extension. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Effort Major.
County Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Effort Major. I live at 1427 Roslyn Pines Boulevard, Mayway, Florida. I'm currently the operation manager. I'm a two-time combat veteran. I have a bachelor's degree in business administration. I've been in the solid waste industry for 16 years. I started as a driver and worked my way into management. Of those 16 years, 10 have been with Waste Management, and the last six have been with Waste Pro. Of those 12 years, I only worked solely in Leon County. In this division, we currently have 75 employees. I'm sorry, 75% of our employees are minorities. Correction. Of the 75%, 92% are African-Americans. The minority rating in our management team is 50%. For myself, I have six direct reports that work under me covering Leon County, Crawfordsville, East Point, City of Tallahassee, Gaston, and Taylor County, all of whom, like myself, have previous driving experience and raise their families in this area. The staff consists of a 50-50 balance. I have three Caucasian males, and I have three African-Americans. Some of the incentives that we offer our driver helpers is a 10,000-5,000 program. Since inception, Waste Pro had given back to employees $4.6 million in incentive program. In 2019 alone, Tallahassee has awarded $100,000. Just previously in January, we awarded four employees $10,000, all drivers. I have Mr. Darrell Brown, Sr., Paul Davis, Demetri Peterson, and Jill Foreman all were awarded the $10,000. The qualification for the reward is three years accident injury-free, provide great customer service to the customer, and taking care of their equipment. Another incentive for helpers is the Cohort Program, which I feel strongly deeply about because it actually helps young men develop a career. When the company, they train and pays for the non-CDL drivers to become licensed CDL drivers through an apprenticeship program, working with their peer mentors, which are fellow drivers, to pair them and test with a Waste Pro certified examiner. Our hiring practice, in our market area, we are always looking for qualified CDL drivers and hard-working helpers to come work for us. So in order to ensure that we are fully staffed, we work with several organizations, and myself personally, I work with Leon County Job Fair, TCC Job Fair, Employer Florida, all veteran job fair, being that we are a military-friendly employer. Residents from the south side, they got somewhat of slight advantage in hiring based on the location. We offer location employment opportunities in Crawfordsville as well, where the makeup of 13 employees, eight of them reside in the south side of town. Also, while I'm here on the northern, I want to also take this time to recognize our employee, Mr. Robert Bowen. Mr. Bowen was selected as one of 13 individuals, including the 2020 African-American Challenge for his effort in promoting and educating customers recycling in the community. Mr. Bowen, thank you. In closing, on behalf of our 160 employees, we would like you guys, Mr. Chair, the Commissioners to extend the contract. Thank you.
Next speaker, Mai Tim Chun. Bob Hires.
Name and address for the record, Mr. Hires.
Bob Hires, address 21 Riverside Drive, Cocoa, Florida. First of all, I just want to talk real quickly about Waste Pro. We are an American firm headquartered here in Florida. If you look at the map, we have 120 municipal contracts in Florida. 17 of those are counties, just the same as yours. Every one of those county contracts, our company has renewed at one time, sometimes two times, sometimes three times. We haven't done that by giving poor service. We have excellent service. We've admitted that there were some some situations here earlier, and we're correcting that. We know we can correct it. We did not become the largest waste collection company in Florida by not providing good service. Just there. Next slide, please. You've heard the story, the saying about if you live in glass houses, don't throw rocks? Well, I've had enough rocks thrown from FCC, so I brought a few stones with me tonight just to show you something. This was just announced about 15 days ago. FCC, Fomentis Constructionis Contratus, at their headquarters city in Barcelona, Spain, was just fined €7 million for failure to perform service. Collection agreement, this was a collection according to the Latin American Herald Tribune. Palm Beach County talked about no service complaints. Palm Beach County, they didn't even have a facility lined up when they started, an advanced planning. They were working out of an agriculturally zoned piece of property, parking trucks with fluids, repairing trucks, portable toilets in Palm Beach County. That was their latest startup that they're so proud of. Polk County, failure to meet essential duties. First 90 days, $104,745. That's just in 90 days. $145,000, $140,000. Orange County is talking about the startup in Orange County, Zone 4 and 5, was FCC. Much higher complaint percentages, 28%, 41% compared to the other two haulers. City of Houston contract, that was their first contract they had that they have bragged about several times. Well, I've got the letter from the City of Houston listing 46 shortfalls in their contract. Failure to provide enough equipment, failure to provide enough people. So I just want to also just point out with Polk County and Orange County contracts, those liquidated damages, when they turn their bid in for the City of Tallahassee, part of the bid requirement is to list your liquidated damages over $10,000. They put NA on that question. In other words, they're claiming they had no liquidated damages. Very deceptive. How much this tonight is also deceptive. I just think that it's important also to realize that with the commercial rate going up, I know they've all talked about that, with the contract, if you contract with them, their commercial rate's going to go up actually a little bit higher than our commercial rate. So it's not going away. We're going to save you $4 million over the next three years. Thank you for your time, and I really hope that you will approve this contract extension for all of our employees and for Waste Pro, and for the city in Tallahassee, and for Leon County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hires.
Final speaker on this item, Amy Tingley.
Amy, name and address for the record, if you don't mind.
Yes, good afternoon. Amy Tingley, 220 North Roslyn Avenue, Orlando, Florida. And I'm counsel for Waste Pro. I just wanted to speak very briefly to one thing. Attorney Iserman talked about it would not be easily, there's not an easy path to terminate this agreement despite what was discussed at the meeting a few weeks ago. I wanted to actually speak to the modification and the termination provision because this termination provision leaves it completely within your hands. It says if the city, if the county, in its sole discretion finds that Waste Pro's services being provided are not satisfactory, or the complaints are excessive and not being resolved in a timely manner, then the administrator may recommend to the board an early termination of the agreement. That's it. You're right, there are no benchmarks because you will set the benchmarks. You have the discretion to terminate this. You have been given even more discretion than if you had to find benchmarks and have meetings to discuss them. This is within your discretion. Candidly, in the years I've been doing procurement, I've never seen such a broad termination provision. And Waste Pro agreed to that because they want to continue in this partnership with the county. They understand there has been prior hiccups, but they are committed to continuing to do quality service as they do throughout the state of Florida with all the contracts discussed earlier today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I think that's it for the public speakers. Okay, Commissioners, I've got Commissioner Proctor up first, if I understand correctly, followed by Commissioner Lindley.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I definitely want to hear from Commissioner Dozier. I know that her opinion and Commissioner Lindley at our last meeting, I remember their line of thoughts. And I want to know exactly how or if they've been persuaded at all. It's amazing, and I wanted to ask before I go down this lane, to ask the county administrator or county attorney, was it our direction to, are you understanding that it was our direction that in the negotiation, it would allow for a significant commercial increase? And if not, what gives rise to a significant commercial increase?
Mr. Chairman, I can take that, I think. Yes, we viewed that within the parameters of your direction, to renegotiate an extension with Waste Pro because it contemplates both residential and commercial. I would say that the important thing, there's been a lot that's probably confusing that you've heard of, but the important thing is, again, residential stays flat, commercial, under the proposal that you have here, and you have two viable options, but under the proposal you have here for Waste Pro, residential stays flat and avoids 28% increase, and commercial goes to the lowest commercial amount bid under the bid environment for every line item that was bid with the two viable bids that we received. So the commercial also goes up to the lowest rate under the bid scenario for commercial.
I think that, you know, in parenting, I think what we're doing, we're the county commission for commercial as well as for residential. And in a certain way, it's almost like we reject a 28% increase from FCC for our residential increase. We said that was just astounding, 28%. We rejected that, but we're willing to embrace and accept a 37% increase for our commercial. Now, if I was a parent, I wouldn't want either of my children, boy or girl, thrown under the bus. But we're clearly making a preferential decision that we're going to throw our commercial citizens under the bus and bear the weight and sacrifice so that residential will remain price neutral with respect to an increase over the next three years. I have to reconcile that these are the, I've not thought that deeply into the weeds of it, and I anticipate Commissioner Dozier's comments because she gets more into the nitty gritty about stuff to help see all of this. But I am concerned that we are allowing for, and I did not reject the 28% increase for residents just for staff to go out and allow for a 37% increase on commercial folk. We the county commission for everybody. And I don't know if profits went up 37% for, I know raises didn't go up for regular citizens. I don't know if the business community in our area, if anyone from the chamber can attest to that. So it's a lot. I have noted before that the social corporate responsibility is an important aspect to me, and I respect that FCC has been loud and clear in bringing their HR director to give us data with respect to what they do with respect to diversity, their management, and all of that. And I think that the level of consciousness shown, and even at the last meeting when this question came up, Waste Pro didn't even factor it, couldn't even respond to the question. But they've come back tonight, and somebody, you know, brought some of that type data. But FCC was ready the last meeting, and it seemed to have been a part of their consciousness. I like that they talked about the community reinvestment angle and how much money goes back. And this is corporate, this is 21st century corporate responsibility, how much money is reinvested. And even to talk about the reentry program of persons who have been convicted and their programs to allow for the hiring of such persons. When I looked in Attachment C under 8.3, it said that no additional fees or surcharges may be charged to commercial customers for commercial collection services here in the 8.3 in this agreement. And I know I'm down in the weeds and I'm in Dozier's territory, but if it says no charges are to occur under the commercial billing procedures, then I'm miffed with what I'm hearing. And how is this going to be reconciled with what's written versus what, is there something that supplants this statement right here? I yield a floor right now, Mr. Chairman, but just my initial thoughts, and I appreciate Waste Pro stepping up to the bat and bringing some social responsibility data to us, and that's very important to me. But how do we get past, and we're willing to give 37% commercial increase just because we perceive that commercials don't have voting registration cards, but residential customers do have residential voting cards? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proctor. Commissioner Proctor, Commissioner Lindley, followed by Commissioner Minor.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all of the comments from everyone. I am very concerned about the current employees. I think you said 160 employees of Waste Pro, and that is a very big issue for me indeed. And I would hope that however this goes, that the FCC hiring practices would be very, very receptive to our current employees, as well as the community participation. I am prepared to make a motion for Option 3, which is to award the bid to FCC.
We have a motion in a second.
Did I interrupt you there?
No, I'm glad to have that interruption, and I'll tell you why. I mean, even as late as Saturday night, I was at home Saturday night about 9:30 and was checking my emails, and then came another complaint about Waste Pro's services. While Waste Pro is on the line for this and has been for weeks and months, things do not get better. This was a woman who had tried phone call after phone call after phone call. Finally, one of our staff, our staff got this problem resolved on Monday morning. But it's inconceivable to me that we can sit here and think, no, we want to stay the course with a company who, which has given us almost nothing but grief for years. There have been some improvements, but we've had to hire an employee of Leon County specially to handle these complaints. You know, I know that this is a difficult, it's obviously a difficult job no matter what, and the transition could be difficult. I appreciate the gesture of FCC to consider extending this with Waste Pro through the end of the year to make any transitions possible. With all due respect to our attorneys, I have no faith in this document which says that we can consider later if the services are not satisfactory. I have no idea what the heck that means. I have no idea when complaints are excessive. I mean, these are very, in the business I've been in, these were called weasel words. These are words that mean nothing. I can't understand how this gives us any comfort at all that we can take a look later and we will all say, okay, excessive. I have no idea what that means, nor I doubt any of you do specifically either. I just can't see, I understand that fundamentally this is about a slight increase in, a monthly increase for residential of a little over $4. It's still lower than what it was when we took the grand leap and cut service by, cut the price by 30%, a mistake in 2014, a mistake on our part, I think, without dispute. We want goods, we want to pay for good service. We don't want to pay less and just put up with constant poor service, and I think that's where we are, quite frankly, tonight. So I'm ready to make the change, and I appreciate the second on option three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A quick question. Ms. Rolini with Sterns Weaver had made a point about with the commercial rates in the Waste Pro negotiated proposal increasing 37%. She mentioned that the price changes in the original contract were limited to 5% when discussing renewal. Could the county administrator or the county attorney address that point, please?
Ken, but Herb, why don't you go first?
The answer is that the chart that is part, the Exhibit A to the amendment replaces that. That's the simple answer. So we got rid of that methodology and have just started, if you would, anew.
And doing that is permit, I think I know the answer to this question, but doing that is permissible under the renegotiation?
If both parties would agree to it, and they did.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. You good, Commissioner Minor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the comments and questions that have come before and the presentation from everyone. I think I'm going to start with, this is challenging, and I'm going to, I believe I know this, but I'm going to say we've got good people in both of these firms and we're in competition here. It is hard for me to unpack a slide that looks at startup penalties versus slides that look at overall penalties that have been assessed on both companies. It does stand out. I just wanted to reflect that, that it's not apples to apples. So there's other things in the mix here that are being presented new, and I think we need to make the decision based on the numbers that we know for Leon County and the overall performance and concerns of the past. So my opinion actually hasn't changed since the last meeting, but like Commissioner Lindley, it has gotten more rooted in. I have also received complaints in the last two weeks. One gentleman I spoke to on Mahan Drive area stood out to me that when he called Waste Pro's customer service after several days and multiple phone calls and said, okay, now I'm going to call my commissioner, his description of this was, okay, fine, just, you know, not caring about it. And I know you don't want to hear that from your customer service reps. This is anecdotal, but I do believe that knowing that there have been problems since '14 and that there were efforts made to address those problems, it is astonishing to me that we see an increase in damages and complaints in 2019. That is the biggest red flag to me that up until we release this bid, the damages this year and the complaints this year were higher than we have seen in the last few years. And so to Commissioner Maddox, you made a strong point last meeting about surely airing these grievances and talking about these things would light a fire under Waste Pro. I believe we've got good people at Waste Pro. I can't analyze why it's not happening, but I don't have confidence in moving forward that we are going to see a level of service increase that I would expect from a Leon County vendor. We want excellence in all of our vendors and everything we do. That's what we strive for. Another point that was made, and I respect this point, and I thought about it a lot by those of you who voted in favor of extending the contract last meeting, was about the $4 a month, $48 a year increase. We all know that this can be a burden for some people on fixed incomes and for others. I have heard from people, in fact, I just glanced at the email earlier, and there are still emails coming in saying, I'm okay with the increase because I want better service. We also provide the rural waste centers free of charge for everyone. So there is an option if you do not, yes, we love our rural waste centers. In fact, we eliminated those fees again just recently. So there is an option for people who can't afford the service. I still believe that $48 is not cost prohibitive per year for individuals who have these contracts. Mr. County Administrator, am I right, there's about $27,000, is that right? Okay. Amazing how those numbers stick out after so many months of talking about this. So I think we do have a fair alternative for people who may have challenges with a rate increase. I believe that the service level, I have more confidence in the new contract. I think that the, not just liquidated damage list that is a nice visual that was shown earlier, but a lot of the other issues that we addressed in the bid are reflective. Our staff did an incredible amount of work to reflect back on what has happened over the cycle of this contract and really bolster that. I see nothing in this contract negotiation that provides assurance that we won't have hydraulic fluid dripping on our roads or consistency in trash pickup or in trash on the side of the road or anything like that. I believe, again, I'm going to keep saying this, there are good people who are trying their best, and I can't analyze why it's not working. I don't know that, but something isn't working. The last point, Mr. Chair, is that it's with the contract extension as we see it. So I share concerns about 37% increase in the commercial rates, but to this question about whether or not FCC's commercial rates are higher than the 37% increase, and Mr. County Administrator, you could speak to that if you would like, but my sense is, and I received one email from a property management firm in town who said that 37% increase with no increase in services is not worth that increase, implying that an increase in cost, if there were, it was matched with increase in services, would be acceptable. So again, we see that on the residential side, and I believe at least from one person, we are hearing it on the commercial side. And within the contract extension, and this is the last thing and maybe my most, I mean, I have a lot of concerns, the termination clause, even if we had more specifics on the number, I think it is vague, I do understand that it gives our county administrator and staff more ability to reflect on what it means to be excessive and other things like that. It's county's determination. That could be a good thing. But I'm going to pose this question as I close here. If we are faced with a choice, and we get a report every six months, and I would hope we can call for it whenever we want, if we keep getting calls, but we're faced with a report that shows what half of us deem as excessive violations and other half maybe not so excessive, or if we all think it's excessive and we all want to do something else, what is going to happen if we trigger that termination clause and we are looking at seven, eight, 12 months with a company that knows they're out? If we are already having service problems enough to terminate a contract, and then we are working with that vendor for eight to 12 months, what happens to the level of service for our residents during that time period? It falls off a cliff from my perspective. I mean, I could see the morale in the staff going down. I mean, that is a challenging position for all of us to be in, and I'm going to wager that we may not take that vote. We may just decide to suck it up and play out the three years, and then we are left with the same problems that we faced for recent years. I wish we weren't in this position. I wish Waste Pro had continued to go down on the damages and the complaints, but with all of these issues, we have alternatives for low-income residents. We need to improve the level of service, and nothing has shown that Waste Pro has been able to improve that level of service. In fact, it's gotten worse this year. So I fully support option three, and I hope we take the step today. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Dozier. We have Commissioner Proctor, then Commissioner Maddox.
Commissioners, comes to us tonight, and their platform is on the basis that they're in a negotiation to extend, so they had a clause. So they have bid it on a new bid, but tonight they're here because they have negotiated, and it has given them a continuing conversation with our staff. FCC is locked out, and they bid it once, and they have not had a second chance to come back and negotiate with our staff. I believe, and I have not talked with FCC, but I believe that FCC, if given a chance, would negotiate down, and if they're able to negotiate down, but they bid it and they locked out and they can't talk to our staff, they just lost. Animal roadside kill, they lost. They won't get a chance to talk no more until three years from now. And Waste Pro has gotten more sit-down table time with staff. Something is wrong that we're not giving a professional company the courtesy, but I imagine our attorney will tell us that's the law and that's tough. Well, I ain't happy about it. I like to see them get a chance to come to the table, sharpen up some pencils and give us, and that we share the benefit of the same second chance of which Waste Pro had, which was a reserve clause in their current contract. I think then the playing field is level and that this commission has the right information to whether or not we want to take that chance with a new girl or not. But we know that the complaints that we already getting from, you know, and I don't keep up with the complaints and all like that, that's, my aides probably heard about that right there. I don't hear about that all the time. But Commissioner Lindley and Dozier have been steadfast on this issue of service complaints, but the fact of the matter is that the playing field is not equal, and we're getting to look at the Waste Pro second set of numbers after the game is over. We did not get a chance to look at FCC's second set of numbers after the game and time expired, and I have a problem with that. And I think that to the maker of the motion, that I ain't happy with none of it. I think that both of them ought to, I mean, at least FCC ought to get a chance to, and a 38%, almost 40% increase on commercial people simply because commercial entities don't hold voter registration cards is, but the Supreme Court said that corporations of people, they can give financial contributions, and you're going to catch it one way or the other, and I think, however, that 40% increase ain't fair. But most of all, I think that FCC ought to be given a second hearing and allowed to sit down at the table with our staff. Everybody done heard everybody's stuff. It's all out there in the open. All of these prices might have been a little, you know, they might can walk it back some, and we can get total satisfaction. I'm not, and maybe we can get the corporate responsibility that this commissioner has touted. I hope that the county administrator, the county attorney, or you all can hear what I'm asking. I'm asking that we freeze this. I'm asking that we give a second sit-down to FCC to see what their numbers can be. We throw all of it out and do a sit-down negotiation. Let's not do a bid. We know where the numbers is, and let's take it from there. Is that possible? Does that need to be a motion, Mr. County Attorney, for what I'm asking?
All negotiations are available. I mean, if FCC wants to adjust their numbers, you know, and that's who you have selected as your successful bidder, then that's just essentially what we've done with Waste Pro. It's negotiated modifications to the contract. So there's going to be negotiations, if this motion passes, with the successful bidder to create the contract. I mean, we're pretty much locked into what the bid specs are, but there's always flexibility. And you wouldn't need to make a motion to do that.
If we find that those bids are not responsive to this county commission's expectations, and we throw all of that out and we start from square zero, we pretty much could do a do-over. Is that accurate?
If your question is, can we just negotiate this before you award the bid, the answer's no. I mean, the bid is the bid. There would be tweaks to it when we finalize the contract, but we did not do anything to negotiate the bid from Waste Pro. What we did was we negotiated the current contract with Waste Pro. FCC doesn't have that, and so they're locked into their bid.
I get that. That's the point I've made, that Waste Pro had the reserve clause, and they submitted numbers, but they got a second bite on the apple to tweak their numbers and reel it back. And what I am saying is that FCC didn't get the second chance to reel their numbers back. We didn't get that opportunity, and they're postured as the losing, non-responsive bidder, maybe, and Waste Pro comes to us as in negotiation on the current contract. They're here out of the contract that they already have. These other people are locked out of the conversation, and I think that that's wrong. I would like to see, and I'm not willing, Commissioner Dozier and Lindley, that we put a blindfold on, and even though the county attorney said they might negotiate their numbers back if we supported FCC, but we can't, we can't do anything in that loosey-goosey not to have some standstill, standstill numbers that we know that we're putting the public's dollar behind. And I think that there ought to be a way which we slow this process down and, or either throw out what we got and start over with negotiations with both sides. I think we can get better numbers out of FCC, and if they ain't got, ain't got no better numbers, then they can go back to Houston, as far as I'm concerned. So we can't lose. We just give ourselves an additional step to get their best numbers, or they can, they know how to get back to Houston. I tend to go in west. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner. I've got Commissioner Jackson, then Commissioner Dozier. You, okay, Commissioner Maddox, and then Commissioner Jackson, and Commissioner Dozier. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, be brief. For $14.50 and the lowest commercial rate amongst all bids, I'll have to vote against the motion on the floor. the motion on the floor. Beg, Mister Chairman.
All right. Commissioner Jackson.
I'll be nearly as brief. $4 a month, $4.04 a month passed on to our constituents is, I won't be able to support the motion.
Commissioner Dozier.
Mister Chairman, I just wanted to point a clarification with Commissioner Proctor's line of questions here. The only two options right now, Mister County Attorney, you were just speaking to this, we are negotiating under an existing contract or accepting the bid from FCC and moving forward. And you've said that was the point at which negotiation could happen. Is that right?
Yep.
The answer is they're locked into their bid. What they may wish to do voluntarily is a whole different matter. I can't make them deviate from their bid.
Thank you. And that prompts my second question. I think the last comments that were made were about an option to look at some of those points, forgive me, we've been in the conversation for a long time here, over the next couple weeks, and to bring something back to the board that was reflective of changes to FCC's proposal. That can only, I mean, I guess I'm asking your opinion on that suggestion by the representatives from FCC. I thought that could only happen if we accept that contract, and then we can go into that point. But is there a third option there?
No.
Yeah.
Oh, you're right.
Okay. I'm, I respect, Commissioner Maddox, Commissioner Jackson, you're holding firm on the $4. I've got that. I think that in the end, what I didn't say before, we're going to see a lot of benefit from a new contract that will save everyone money in the long run with Leon County. I made that point last time, and I really hope that, Commissioner Proctor, you can see a path to at least get to the next step and negotiate. If you've got the similar concerns about Waste Pro, I hope that, I'm going to use your phrase there, waff with us, and get to that next step so that we can see what comes back in the negotiation from FCC. Thank you.
Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. First of all, I want to thank everyone from speaking, representing on behalf of FCC as well as Waste Pro. I mean, it's, I appreciate you all being here. Two weeks ago at our last meeting, I commented that, for me, that all this boiled down to one key question. Are citizens in any, in corporate areas willing to continue with the current level of service, keeping the price the same, $4 a month, foregoing, avoiding the $4 a month increase? And at that time, almost off the, off the top of my head, I said, this is a no-brainer question for me. But that is anything but. I'm disappointed with what is, what we've seen since, since that two-week, meeting two weeks ago. I'm not happy with the increase in the commercial rates being 37%. And also, one thing I talked about two weeks ago was making sure that the metrics, that are establishing metrics on performance of the last several months for Waste Pro. You know, generally speaking, the last three or four months, from what I understand, among our, among our constituents, has been much better in terms of a reduction on the number of complaints. One thing I talked about two weeks ago was making sure that we held Waste Pro to that standard that we've enjoyed over the last three or four months. I don't see that in this, in this new proposal. Commissioner Dozier, you made a really solid series of points. One thing that really struck me, for example, was the, you know, should we go through worst-case and have a termination and execute that termination? We have six to eight months of seeking a new vendor at the time when we have someone with whom we were dissatisfied and has no motivation to continue service even at that level. This is a really tough decision. Anything but a no-brainer. All that being said, I don't have the history that you all have. I don't have the years of seeing the fluctuations in the number of complaints. My time on this dais, dais has been, you know, just over a year, and so I don't have the institutional knowledge that you all have. So I don't have the context that you all have. I, this has been really tough, and I actually go back and forth. At this point, I still think, based on feedback from my district, from people that do not live in the city, that are Waste Pro customers, yes, I've received quite a few complaints. I don't believe at this point that those rise to the level of changing the vendor, paying $4 more for a different vendor with a different level of service. I recognize, I appreciate what FCC has been presenting to us. I think it's very helpful to have that type of competition. I just don't think that, from what I've seen within my district, my question that I had two weeks ago still stands, even though I'm not happy with what the proposals come back, in the general sense, I still stick to my vote last time and would reject this motion. Thank you.
I've got Commissioner Proctor up, but before you go, Commissioner Proctor, because we're making a second or third lap here, I want to weigh in here a little bit. I also can't deal with the price increase. I said it before, garbage is a messy business. This is not the kind of thing where people generally call you and say, I'm so excited my garbage got picked up. I mean, it just doesn't happen that way, and I would be willing to bet all of us, over the last 15 or 20 years, have had an issue one way or the other in some form or fashion. It's a tough business, and to make everybody happy is virtually impossible. So you do the best you can. I want to thank staff. They went back, you know, some of y'all lived through the last transition. It was pretty, pretty horrible, just from a standpoint of just the disruption. I'm really going to have to have something monumental happen before I'm willing to go down that path, and I don't want to see a price increase passed on to people. On the commercial side, this is a lower price than was offered in FCC's bid, so the reality is we've got a better deal. They had embedded in theirs high, higher commercial rates. So I just go back to the end and say, I'm not willing to support an increase at this time. I think we've gone back in and worked out some customer service issues. As Commissioner Maddox said at the last time, you know, we need to hold them accountable. And so now, that, and I am not going to outlaw your, our county attorney and try and figure out what is and what is not a termination clause in the contract. So I'm, I'm good with sticking with the current provider because I'm not willing to raise the rates. And so at some point, I would entertain a substitute motion if that happens, or we can vote this one up or down. Commissioner Proctor.
Commissioners, I'd like to ask if the CEO of FCC, if I could ask a question, sir.
Well, wait a minute. I'm not sure I want to open, yeah, this, let's have the discussion up here. We have a bid, we've, everybody's had a chance to speak. I don't want to, it opens up Pandora's box, because then you'll have to ask Waste Pro to come back, and you'll get into a tit-for-tat, so.
If I limit it to one question?
No. We've got all the bid material, we've got county attorney and county administrator. I'd lean on them if you've got a question. They've probably spent untold hours.
Well, they done flew a lot of people down here to answer our questions.
And they've all spoken, yeah.
But I didn't ask them a question.
Well, you can probably ask. I would imagine Herb or Vince could probably answer your question.
Well, the question I want to ask before I take this vote, so that I know, you know, I don't have on a blindfold, is out of all the things that have been stated here over the last little bit, I need to know from this company, are you prepared to, to be flexible? And, I mean, I know you're not from here in a startup situation, coming into a brand-new area. On a startup, those numbers could got a little juice, but it's a startup. I understand it. But when you get to a graduated scale of payment that starts at $1,450 and scales up, where I need to know, is this a company that's flexible out of all that y'all heard and would work with this community? And your numbers, are they that rigid and locked, or can, can they come down? That's all I need to know.
Go ahead, Herb.
The answer is, for purposes of your decision-making tonight, the bid is what the bid is, and that's how you have to go.
And weren't we prohibited from talking to these people?
Yes.
So how can we make an informed thought when you can't even ask them, are you willing to roll your numbers back? But Waste Pro got a 100% extra inning to talk, to negotiate with staff, and they didn't. So I wanted to ask them, is y'all willing to bring your numbers back? We know what the complaints are. These folk had walked up and said, we don't make a 20% commitment to MBE stuff. I can respect that, but I can't even ask them, will you bring your numbers back? That's the most fundamental question I want to know, since cost is what's got Commissioner Maddox gagging, has got Minor gagging, and the Loja gagging on a dollar a week increase. So if we can't ask that question, I'm prepared to support the motion that's on the table.
Commissioner Maddox. Question's been called. I'll second that.
Yeah, your motion. Lindley's motion.
Yeah, there's a.
Option three.
No, there was never a second motion. So we'll vote on the motion on the floor.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there's just.
So now you have to vote on that. A motion to call the question.
Right. Okay, we have a motion to call the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Six, one, as I read it. Okay. All right, so now we vote on the motion to, which was Commissioner Lindley's motion, which was option three. All in favor of the motion to switch to FCC effectively, which is option three, signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Aye. So we have the motion fails. Right. Okay. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I assume someone in the majority will make another motion. I'm not going to do that.
Can't be me.
But I do have a request to make, at least for the first year. Miss County Administrator, you can tell me if this is possible or not. The reports coming back to us two times a year, I would very much appreciate this year quarterly reports. If we are actually serious about this termination clause, this is the year that I want to see dramatic increase, and I think quarterly reports is appropriate. So I would hope that the maker of the motion will include that. Thank you.
That's fair. Yes, Commissioner Maddox. Well, I would entertain a motion from somebody to support one, two, and A and B.
I move one, and, are you done? Move option one and two, A and B.
Okay. I have a motion. I'll second that motion. I think Commissioner Dozier has a valid point, and I think Commissioner Maddox basically took it further. I don't know, is quarterly manageable?
Mister Chairman, I was assuming quarterly would be easier for our staff and more digestible for us, to give us a good snapshot of what's going on, so I appreciate.
I would certainly appreciate having that as part of the motion.
Thank you.
Okay, so you're good with that, Commissioner Jackson?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to A, one, one and two, A and B, as it's been presented with the amendment relative to quarterly reports, which is really more of an internal function than anything else. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oh, Commissioner Minor, I'm sorry.
Real quick, Mister Chairman. Commissioner Jackson, would you, would you allow an amendment to that motion to adopt, to instruct the county staff to work with Waste Pro to incorporate some hard metrics that satisfy, that are commensurate with what we've seen the last several months, so that we have some type of minimum benchmark with which to hold Waste Pro accountable?
Mister Chairman, on point. Is that something we could do, Mister Administrator?
Certainly. Commissioners, if you decide that that's the way you want to go, frankly, we don't have them in here because it gives us more leverage to determine what is and what isn't acceptable, and bring it to you with a recommendation.
Does that answer your question?
If that's the county staff's approach on that, I'm fine with it. The only issue I have, the only concern I have about that is that if it's not something that is concrete.
It's not debatable.
What's that?
It's not a debate between us and the contractor.
I, what I, let's say, let's say the level of service is such that does trigger the county administrator to come back to us and recommend termination. What I don't want to have is debate here about what level of quality of service we wanted, and whether or not it met that level of service. I'd like to, I will defer to county staff because, you know, you all spent untold hours on this, on this negotiation, and I'm fine with moving forward without the metrics, but I just want to make sure that when it does come back to us, they very clearly have not been meeting the level of service that we, that we wanted. Maybe that's as simple as having the county staff determine what that level is and come back to us. I'm okay with that, if that's the approach that county administrator wants to follow. What I don't want to have happen is we have something come back, and then we have a debate every quarter about what the level of service is. I don't want to have that debate up here. I want to have something relatively cut and dry that realizes we need to discuss very seriously whether to terminate.
Mister Chairman, and again, this is purely, I mean, this will be the board's direction, and if that's something that you, that you want, we'd be more than happy to develop those metrics. Again, for us, it becomes an issue in the field of, is a leak that's not cleaned up in three days a problem, but one that is cleaned up in four days is not a problem, and one that is cleaned up in five days? So again, there are issues that you can, that you can do this with. Again, we believe it gives us more leverage for us to be able to say that this is an unacceptable level of, of, of service. We can make our case to you in written form, and you can, you can accept it, or not, and take action.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, Mister Chairman, it does. I'm fine with it. I will not propose amendment.
Okay.
Mister Chairman, I want to win.
We've got Commissioner Proctor.
Mister Chairman, I just want to say that I feel that this process, though legally is legal, but I still think that functionally it gave Waste Pro the right to bid, and they reserved that other thingy to negotiate. I think the FCC got locked out. I think that that's not pragmatic, and I didn't even get a chance to talk or hear from them as far away as they come. If I'd come down here from Houston to talk three minutes, I'd have been really upset. And it just seems like for this many people to come together and for $14 million to get three minutes to talk on, it's got to be something a little more cogent than what we've done here. And I really believe, though I let the scrutiny recognize, that I didn't get a chance to get all the information from both companies the same, nor did our staff get a chance to receive information, filter it on the same checklist that this commission could have been funneled equally the same from both sides on negotiated stance. And maybe the next contract should be something which is negotiated. But I'm saying to Waste Pro, y'all got to pull up on your social stuff. This ain't no play-play community, and I take very seriously, this commissioner does, our standards to diversity, equity, inclusion, all of that stuff. Your numbers sounded good, all of that. I really don't want to see the report on the trash pickup in the county every month. I don't need to know that. If y'all need to know who trash can didn't get picked up, I don't want to know. But I think that in terms of what you're doing, your performance, what you're giving back is meaningful to the taxpayers of our county. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. I've got nobody else in the queue. All in favor of the motion made by Commissioner Jackson, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Proctor, are you opposed to the motion? You're with the majority. Okay, so we got a 5-2 vote, by the way I read it. All right, let's take a quick temperature here. It's a few minutes after five. We got two more items on general business. You want a break for dinner and come back? You want to keep going? I think the next two items are probably a little bit more concise, and I know we've got people in the audience that have been waiting, so I'd be willing to roll. Yeah, okay. Mister Administrator.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Commissioners, as directed by the Board at your January 28th meeting, this item seeks Board approval of an amendment to the county's contract with Marpan Recycling in order to ensure the continuation of single-stream recycling in the immediate term. Additionally, we're seeking Board authorization to pursue a contract with a consultant to identify alternative long-term strategies for future recycling program.
We have a motion and a second for staff's recommendation. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I really appreciate this item. I just wanted to let you all know that I did bring this up at the Appalachian Regional Planning Council meeting last week. I shared this with county administrator. I'd mentioned that at the last meeting, and looking at our region as a potential benefit, helping other counties address their issues, get some economy at scale. The conversation was robust. There was immediate positive response. Franklin, Liberty, Calhoun, Jefferson, multiple county commissioners and other appointees, city folks leaned in and said, if there was a way to work together, they would love to do that. So I've shared this. I would look at the consultant to reflect on that. I know it's in the item. Just wanted to mention that and also say, there's a lot of appreciation. We're working really collaboratively with all of our neighboring counties, and they were just very appreciative of even having the opportunity to be asked the question and participate in this. So, thank you.
But that's a great point, and yeah, to the degree we can collaborate. I'd also like to just give Marpan and Kim a shout-out for being such a good partner. I know this is tough times, and he's, this is not. I know this is tough times, and he's, this is not a great place for him to be, but he's riding with us a little longer. So, motion and a second on the floor, all in favor, signify.
Mr. Chairman, I want to weigh in on this. I want to ask if staff would begin to prepare a campaign to our community that the recyclable program, there may be an adjustment. And it's very important that we're communicating, it's not that we've been impacted by 1,600 Pennsylvania Avenue, that we've had an intellectual decline toward recycling, but that the economics of the secondary market, not purchasing recyclables, has occurred and impacted us. And I think it's very important that it looks like that the county is dumbed down in there. And I would like to see us communicate clearly to the public in the coming days, if our recyclable program is impacted drastically. Thank you.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any other discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Number 17.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this item seeks the board approval of the Cultural Facilities Matching Grant Program Funding Awards, as recommended by COCA and the TDC. Commissioner's Carrie Post is on deck here and available to answer any questions you might have. I know that Kathleen from COCA is also-
Chairman, I move recommendation.
We have a motion.
About one speaker card.
We have a speaker card. We have a motion. Let me get a second just to dispose of that, and then we have speaker. I'll second the motion. Okay, speaker.
Kathleen.
Kathleen.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you so much for this opportunity to speak on behalf of COCA and the COCA Board of Directors. You have in front of you the FY19 Cultural Facilities Matching Grant Alternative Recommendations, approved by both the COCA Board of Directors and Tourism Development Council. These recommendations are the result of considerable efforts and many communications made between myself, on behalf of COCA, and Carrie Post, on behalf of the TDC. They also include extensive review and consultation between the county attorney's office and COCA's outside legal counsel. Legal and compliance aspects of the situation were considered, and this process resulted in these alternative recommendations. COCA believes this solution offers the most equitable funding resolutions for all stakeholders, while ensuring legal compliance and maintaining the integrity of the grant's review process. We will carry all these learnings forward into our annual grants program review. We are thankful for the opportunity to work together, especially with county attorney LaShawn Riggins and Carrie Post from the TDC, to ensure compliance is met. And we appreciate the patience of the applicants who have been waiting as we work through this process. Everything we're doing from now on is pointing to the future, and I thank the commission for addressing these recommendations today.
Thanks, Kathleen. I have three commissioners in line to speak. Commissioner Maddox, Commissioner Dozier, and Commissioner Lindley. Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I deem the TDC's approval and recommendation to the board of approval of these funding funded organizations to be based off of the reality that the organizations and applications were eligible for funding. But I cannot support approval based on at least four to five different instances where I feel the, the application process was unfair to one of the vendors. And so because of such, I'll be voting against any motion to approve the recommendations. But I will not, will not make a motion to not approve altogether.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I first want to say, and I mentioned this the last meeting, this has been a very detailed, very involved process. It's not been easy to unpack this, and I really appreciate the hard work by both Kathleen and Carrie Post. LaShawn, thank you for stepping in with this. And for COCA, the council that was brought in from Osley. I think we really did a deep dive. Yes, there remain some questions, and I, I'm going to stop stammering here. You all know me well enough. I have had concerns for years about our grant process and changing the grant process at the end. It is remarkable to me that I got to rejoin the COCA board, thank you, Commissioner Maddox, right at the start of this. The first meeting was starting the facilities grant conversation. I just wanted to say, in, you know, I know most people aren't going to know the long history of the comments I've made, the concerns I've raised. This process, I think, uncovered a lot that was corrected, to the extent it could be for this grant, and I believe it is fair, and it's been vetted by multiple boards and committees and lawyers at different steps in the process. But it also is going to impact the grant process going forward, and I think that's what Kathleen was speaking to, and I think my conversations with Carrie, I mean, we're, we are continuing to improve. We're going to have TDC representation on the COCA board, and there's already COCA representation on the TDC board. I see this partnership as getting stronger and stronger, which we've needed for a long time. And I think this is not the easiest way to start, but it is a phenomenal start to what I hope's going to be a really excellent grant process going forward at COCA, and let's also say, other projects as well. And so, appreciate everyone getting it, you know, taking the time to work through this, and, Mr. Chair, to you and your board at TDC for working through it several times. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Dozier. I've got Commissioner Lindley, and then Commissioner Minor.
Thank you very much. I, I'm prepared to vote for the staff recommendation, but it has been very disappointing to me to see some of what I saw as inequities in this approach, the bundling, the bonus points for years in service. I think there, and I do hope that some corrections are going to be made on down the road on these grant processes, because this has been clumsy. I don't want to hold up anything. I want these projects to be able to go forward. They're going to be great. I mean, the Goodwood Museum, the preservation of that old water tower out there, the additional property out at the Tallahassee Museum and so forth, all great projects. But there were some other ones, too, that I think were remiss. I would have loved to see in the IMAX Theater get some new seats, because they're really uncomfortable right now, and maybe next time. But I will support it, but certainly hope this grant process is a little more smooth and more fair next time. I don't feel that it was very fair this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Lindley. I've got Commissioner Minor, and then Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a tough decision, because I know the folks that are applying, there's some really great projects here. The money is sorely needed by, by all the applicants. I'm joining Commissioner Maddox, though, in not voting to support this, because I just, I didn't see enough consistency in the way the application guidelines and the grant process was applied to all the applicants. So I can't vote to support it.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Minor. I've got Commissioner Proctor.
Mr. Chairman, when this kind of money go out the door, and it's just all, all-white institutions and so forth, I just think that some money needs to go to more diversity. And, you know, as a basis that, this, this is not a level, I mean, in particular, if Goodwood could get 133,000, you got to find somebody. And this is a hard to do, to swallow, and there is no diversity in this panel that's been awarded. And I'm not saying that a, a, that there's an automatic, you know, but I'm impressed with the Rooney Rule in the NFL, that if you're looking for a coach, you at least got to interview somebody black before you select a coach in the NFL. And there's a lot of culture and a lot of different components, and I think that the scoring has to be more inclusive. I'm willing to start tonight. And, I mean, one of the things you, I mean, if you listen to her often, is I always try to listen to, to stake out your values, your thoughts, what, and Commissioner Lindley talking about a process that was not equitable is rare and special news, because she hardly ever invokes any perception of fault about the irregularity of a process. So that's a major, I'm hearing a major earthquake-type seismic-size fault coming up, because inequities is not what she, you know, that's not her strong suit, and I'm just appreciative that she's lending that kind of fault. So overall, I'm not happy about the diversity of this panel, and I'll listen to others.
You finished, Commissioner Proctor? I'm sorry. Yeah. Commissioner Dozier, you want to weigh back in?
Just one last comment. I mean, I know it's late, Mr. Chair, so I didn't say a lot more a moment ago. I don't think this was perfect. This is the same application we've used for several years. The bonus points, I think this process illuminated an issue we've had with bonus points, and how they're applied to institutions that are connected to higher ed. In talking through this, and with past staff at COCA, the board decided that the, there was consistency with past grant applications, the last round of facilities grant. So I want to be clear, I do not think this was perfect. I believe the process to unpack the questions and to assess the various elements, classrooms had been funded in the past, but they were caught by both lawyers, and really delved into that, and assessed whether or not they fit the tourism development tax criteria, and they were pulled out. So I think we, I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on this. This is a step in the right direction, but we have not, we've seen problems with no appeals process in the regular grant funding. Commissioner Maddox, you had to deal with this a year and a half ago, right? These types of things run into a lot of challenges when we don't have a mechanism to unpack and address some of these questions, if they come up. We never want them to come up, but if they come up, how are we going to do this? You've heard me speak to the challenges in that process, and appreciate the time and the commitment to unpack this, because that's the most important thing to me, that we had an application that had been used for years. I've used the description of, you got a problem in your bylaws, you don't necessarily know it until you exercise it. Once you know it, you got to change it. That, we, we had to change it this time. And I think going forward, you will not see the bonus point issue in the same way. You'll see it described in a different way. I believe, I mean, that's the conversation that was at the board. So I think the way this one was vetted, since the questions came up by TDC, by COCA, by county council, has been very good. It points to a better process in the future, a lot of lessons, and so that's why I have confidence. But you all have heard me say enough in the past, I just wanted to say that one quick comment, Mr. Chair, that this is a step in the right direction. So, thank you.
Yeah, let me, as a TDC representative, let me just weigh in and say that, thanks to Carrie and her staff for the patience, for many of the recipients, for their patience, because this is kind of wound on forever. And it was, to echo Commissioner Lindley's words, it was clumsy, and it could have been done better. And we've got to look and see, there's got to be a better way to do this. So with that, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
So the motion carries five-two, if I carried that right? Four-three, who was the other? To Commissioner Proctor, you, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, four-three, yeah. And we are in recess until six, public hearings. Is that right?
That's right.
Thanks. All right, I'm glad we-